I'm going to bring the Dunbar Board's second meeting into order. Okay, all three second of present. The Secretary is not here, it's being taped. Video and on audio. Town Attorney is present. Recording for the video for the benefit of the citizens is Mr. Leo Martell. Thank you, Leo. Okay, we have two sets of minutes.
And I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of December 6th. Regular meeting as an end.
I'll second that. Any discussion? I don't know. Dave, I was right there. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve the Dunbar Board's second minutes for a non-public session Thursday, December 6th, at the town offices at 10:30 a.m.
And I'll second that.
And discussion, you're going to have them standing. You're right there. All in favor? Any discussion, Bob? Any further discussion?
No. It was a motion to seal them.
Yep.
And I say aye.
Okay. And those can be sealed. Mike, I inserted you into the agenda. You were not on the written agenda, but I inserted you first thing after the public comment because you made a request earlier. It was not on your back. I'm inserting you. Okay, I'm going to go for a public comment. If you have any public comment, please state your name for the record as we go around the room. If not, we'll bring you back to the floor. Last row, Leo, anything, public comment?
All right.
Okay. Don.
Don Larson, Reefs Across Dunbarton. I just want to thank the community for coming out Saturday. We started at 10 o'clock with our ceremony and by 10:26, we were pulling away because everybody, we had so many volunteers. We, you know, put the reefs on and it was a great event. I think everybody had a good time.
Yeah, great.
Thank everybody for their donations.
I understand we have another donation tonight.
Yes.
Okay. Linda, you're on the agenda?
I'm on the agenda.
Second row, anything for the public? Oh, Mike, you're going to be on next. Okay, I'm going to close the public comment. And Mike, you have the floor.
Okay. Last time I was in, I got a couple of questions.
Sure.
You said that the town truck was involved in it, one of the plow trucks was involved in an accident?
Yes, one of the contractors.
Yeah, what day was that?
I know it was on a Wednesday night, I'm just not sure exactly when.
So, was it on the fifteenth, it wasn't on the 15th or 16th of November?
No, it was the week after that, I think.
Yeah, it's been impacted future.
So, it wouldn't have impacted the snowstorm current date from 16th.
So noted, I'll, so noted.
And you also stated that none of the ground roads in town were plowed.
I, I said there was a delay and some, and some were not plowed.
Some were not plowed. Others were plowed.
I don't know, I can't attest to a, to 100% certainty. I'd have to ask the question of the road agent again, so I can't affirm that one way or another.
Okay.
When I first talked to the road agent, I thought it was a delay. Then Leo commented, Mr. Leo Martell commented that his road wasn't plowed and then many others were not plowed. So, the thing is, I did not pursue that since last meeting.
All right. And do we know what time snow plowing operation started on the 15th of November?
I don't have that knowledge in front of me.
Okay, because I've asked for that information on a couple of occasions and I still haven't gotten the answer. But I did, you did give me this. Standard operating procedures, snow removal, ice control. The policy, provide timely, efficient, cost-effective winter maintenance, snow removal, ice control on the roadways of municipality for the safety and benefit of town residents and the general mode of the public. My road getting plowed at 12:30 in the afternoon of the 16th, I think is excessive. That storm started on the 15th. I know because I was sitting outside and I was sitting on my porch at 8 o'clock at night and the snow was coming down. So, I'm thinking the snow plows got called out around midnight. Because you start snow plowing operation, you start snow plowing about, I mean, there's two inches of snow. So, I figured from 8 o'clock at night to midnight, plows would have been called up. Mr. Dahl stated that he saw me out there shoveling the road in the morning.
That was about 10 o'clock, as she attested to.
What's that?
It was about in mid-morning.
What, that he saw me? Oh, yeah, it was. It was like, he passed me at 10:15 and at 10:45 approximately. He did show up to stop plowing at 11:58. Okay, so it's not like he, you know, saw me out there shoveling this snow, said, "Oh, my God, I gotta get out, I gotta drop what I'm doing and get out there." Okay. Oh. And he gave you a list of routes here. And I think that these routes are a little bit outdated.
Very much so. Very much so. That was my, that was my assumption when I first read that. I said, "And Lee pointed out to me, this needs to be updated big time."
Okay, because my problem last year, and again, my problem this year, my road's listed on Route 2. You've got Jan Venable got down here is plowing. And I remember when he used to plow, he'd bring his 10-wheel, he'd bring his 10-wheel dump truck down, plow off the road. Jeff Crosby has stated that, well, the only thing I've heard in state, it was the selectman prior to you guys, when he decided to hire Dave Dahl to stop plowing this road, or plow Kelsey Road at $100 a storm, that Kelsey Road is a pain in the butt. I'd like to know just what the pain in the butt is and I'd like to know why. I only get on the initial cleanup from a snowstorm, I'll have a pickup truck go up and down the road and leave a travel space where there's only one, where basically if I need an oncoming car, either I or both of us are driving over snowbanks.
To get by.
To get by. That doesn't, that to me is a problem of safety. And I know the town has a policy, if you get stuck, plow truck drivers aren't going to help you out of the snowbank. So, I don't know why myself and Miss Martin have to put up with that kind of, I don't know, lackadaisical service, I guess. And I noted last year, when I brought you guys in pictures of similar, similarly gravel roads in town, for instance, the south end of Guinea Road, that had been plowed out by a big truck or the town truck, because that's on Route 2. Range Road had been plowed out by, by the big truck. And then here I was, waiting until the following day to get plowed.
This is last year.
That was last year.
Yeah.
Okay? And I, I don't want to be dealing with that stuff this year. Okay, now we'll move on to.
I'll have a discussion with the road agent to make sure that your concerns are something of which with him.
Yeah, well, I don't think he really cares about.
Well, whether, whether he cares or not, it's his responsibility. As elected official, it's his responsibility to make, to ensure the plowing is done. It's going to be done in an accurate manner.
Okay.
And that's why I will, I have a discussion with him and that's where I'm going to leave it at that point. I, I have to talk to him first.
Okay, all right, you talk to him and I'll come back and I'll.
Remember, I, remember I said vigilance and the thing is, you communicate back to me, that's all I think I asked.
Okay, well, just be vigilant.
And I, I get it.
Okay. Okay, now we move on to the lawsuit.
Yes.
Between the town, myself, and Dave Dahl. Now, I received a letter from my lawyer and Jeff Crosby is, is talking. And what he's proposed is to turn around in front of my house. I'll point this out loud. Cameras on. Okay? That's the bond. He's saying he's going to cut, this addition is no longer there. Okay? The judge awarded, the, the judge's decision, he talks about the gravel later in front of my house, he lists 13 to 15 feet wide, not 50 feet, 13 to 15 feet wide. When you take something by prescription, you get to use, you get to take what you use. Okay? So, that's 13 to 15 feet wide, not 50 feet. Okay, this addition, it's shown on the original boundary line agreement survey. This addition was here. And not only is it shown there, but around the corner there, where Settle His Feet have trod, there's a picture of my house. And the pic, but it's actually not a picture of the house as it is today, it's the picture of the house that was there originally that burned down. My house is rebuilt on the original foundation. Okay? And this addition was there. You can still see the tied roof line on, on east end of my bind, this is east, northwest, south. Okay? Couple of years ago, I put in four, bulk. My septic system failed. I know, you know, so I had to replace it. And where it failed is right here. Now, I knew the, the system was there and in court, in the, the big binder there, there's a picture that shows a boat parked here. When Jeff Crosby came down and told me, "Well, we can no longer come down here and plow snow, you know, leave snow here because Dave Dahl's going to stop building out here. We want to, we're going to stop pushing it over here." At that time, I believe the survey for my property, it lists, you know, approximate location of Kelsey Road. So, I had no problem with pushing snow over there. But seeing as how this is prescription and you get to use the, the stuff that was, you get to use the area that was available in 1968, you weren't pushing, they weren't plowing snow here. This addition is about, it scales out off of that survey, it's about 31 feet long and about 19 feet wide. They weren't pushing snow into that addition. They weren't, just like my barn, which is an old post and baiting construction, I mean, you could, you're going to be able to push snow in there, but you're not going to be able to push snow up against the barn. You will certainly didn't push, the town will certainly didn't push snow up against this addition. And they weren't driving around on top of the original septic system. Nobody lets, drives around on top of the septic systems unnecessarily. So.
That's town attorney, I mean, that's the last question.
And from the, from the front of the barn to here is about 40 feet. So, and these are the, these little tick marks here indicate where my doors are. So, however he wants to do his snow, snow plowing, I don't want any snow stacking, blocking the access to my barn. I don't want any snow pushed into this addition area because he's going to have to pretend that that addition is still there. And I, I, as this wasn't in use, he shouldn't be pushing snow over there either. And he's, the letter from the lawyer, he wants to come down with a front end loader. I've never seen that in the past. But if he does, he manages to find the original septic system and I don't know what's out there, whether it's Leach Field, cesspool, whatever, but that machine sinks out of sight in a puddle of poo. Don't try to blame me because you're one, okay?
Okay.
And if, and if anyone doubts that, we can get a backhoe, we can dig down, dig into this area and I'm sure we can perform an olfactory test and it'll positively prove that that's where the poop went.
Okay.
So, that's my position. I don't know what the town's position is, except from what?
Who's emailed you?
Your lawyer and Jeff Crosby sent to my lawyer.
Correct. That was the town's position as of this morning.
As of this morning. Well, I'm not going to allow you to put snow here in this addition area. It wasn't available in 1968. Like I said, the, the picture in, where Settle His Feet have trod, that picture was taken prior to the original house burning down in 1929, so we know it was there then. It's on the, it's on my survey that I bought the property on, so we know it was there in 1988. So, that pretty much covers the area of 1968.
Okay. I'd like to just, we talk over this with the road agent and I can't give you an answer one way or the other. I, I hear your concerns and, Bob, do you have any questions?
No, if you're going to bring it up with Jeff, because that's how you're going to get your answers.
Yeah, I can't answer one way or the other, but I hear your concerns. Basically, the addition, you don't like, you don't want anything there, you don't want to have your entrance blocked and plow driver be aware of the septic system area.
Yes, and don't, and don't try to pack snow up against the barn.
Right.
Because if that rolls off the sill, again, I'll be coming to the town looking to repair the barn.
As, as I would, as I would expect.
Okay.
Okay. I can answer, I can address, but I'm going to pass your, pass your concerns forward. We'll discuss it, we'll see what, what solution we work out. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
All right. Was that your diagram?
Oh, that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's not to scale, so.
I understood. Thing is, what I'd like to do is maybe with myself and Jeff, maybe with yourself, have a walk-through on the ground. It's one thing to see it on the, up in the map, I think a walk-through would be probably beneficial. Make sure when I.
The only day I won't be available, I have a Christmas party to go to on Sunday.
Okay, during the week you'd be available. I'll give you a call, I'll give you a call a day and note, at least, I'll try for a day notice at least.
Yeah, I get home about, I'm just working in Manchester, so I'm generally home by about 4:30.
Okay.
Or if you want to swing by on Saturday.
Okay. Yeah, that's all right, Bob. We want to do during the day so we can see, we want to see the light, some lighting around there too. So, probably Saturday. I'll, I'll, we'll work something, we'll be communicating with you one way or another.
All right.
Do we have your phone number, Lee? Okay.
I'm in the little Dunbar phone booth.
Okay, good. I just think that to see it on the, on the little off-scale map like we're doing is not doing it justice. I think the road agent, you and I could be there just to walk through it, I think would be beneficial.
Okay, because I got a copy of that original survey and we can scale off it and I do have tape measures.
Yeah, well, I just, I want to get something, one, I want to get the road plowed, I want to get it done safely and I don't want to impinge upon your property rights.
Oh, and I forgot to mention these, I, I had locked them up there, but I erased them. The posts that are along here.
Yes.
This thing. That wasn't, that was never part of the town right away. And the picture that the, that the, that your lawyer sends around with the, with the green lines, it was on, it was the PDF on his, his letter.
Okay.
Okay, I don't know where that came from, but that's incorrect. Someone's added, whatever's outlined in green, someone's added to my new survey because it shows, it shows the roadway coming to within a foot or two off the corner of my house. This is about a 25-foot area.
Okay.
Okay? And I'm not going to, I'm not going to give that up either.
Okay. Okay, well, let's, let's get it scheduled and we'll get it scheduled and we'll be in touch with you. Because I think a walk, a walkabout on the area would be worthwhile.
Oh, I think it would be too, Mike. Okay then.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
All right.
Looks like I'll be going. If I, if you want to go, we'll make a, we need a.
If you do that, we have to make a public.
Dave, I ask you to step down now, okay?
Yeah, it's a public meeting, Mike.
Oh, for sure.
Now, one other thing, when you, since he brought all this up, the town attorney has already referenced all of his questions that he brought up tonight. All of the previous road agents, all four of them, have testified in court, showing that they turned around in front of that barn.
Yeah, it's not the turnaround he's worried about, but where the septic is, you mean?
The septic and where he's calling, there was an addition there. That addition's been gone since I've been a kid. The town has turned around and all of the road agents have testified in court that they turned around right in front of that barn and house.
Yeah.
So, whether they were on a septic system at the time or not, or that addition where it was proposed or up in the 1800s, that's where they turned around and they testified to that in court. So, and our town attorney has already responded, so.
Exactly, I just want to.
I just want to make you, by going out there, you may be stepping on the town attorney's toes.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm basically using that as a guidance. But I, I don't want to see it on a sketch, I want to see it on the ground.
And another thing, those posts that he says are stained, the town has pictures of those in the traveled portion of the road. So, they were put in the traveled portion of the road and the town has pictures of those when they were first installed. So, he's stating he's going to leave those posts in there.
I thought he took, I thought he took them on, right?
He took the ones out on the opposite side of the road and you remember, the town truck hit a post.
Right, there was one broken.
On the roadside.
Yeah. The thing is, Jeff is already on that email, attorney, he said he could get by the, with the, the post pulls a problem down.
He can get by him with a smaller truck, but he can't plow it the way he had before.
Okay, I'd like, I'd like to hear from him one more time. I think we'll follow.
No, I think we need to look at it before we make any.
Agreed.
Any other communications, even if it takes one and another one with your attorney.
Yeah. Okay. Now, I'll take a motion for next, next item on the agenda. Okay, Lee, I can have that fraction and the road agent needs just to chat with me.
Yeah.
Because I think I do want to walk the ground.
Okay, I'll make a motion per hour, say 31, colon, 95, dash, B, Roman numeral 3, paragraph B, to accept a donation in the amount of $120 for Reefs Across Dunbarton from the residents. Second.
Lee, do you have this amount of money, $120, in possession? Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks again, Don.
You're welcome.
Mary, the Dunbar Library trustees, you're on the, you're on the hot seat. So, do we have a presented budget?
Can I just ask a question for Mary? Is this 2018, this 2019?
Yes.
Is that how they're, okay.
Okay, it went up. Tell me where, where, talk to, let's talk about, who's going to make a presentation of a question?
Well, me too.
Please.
My name is Katie McDonald and I'm the secretary and I've, I've been the point person on the, the biggest item of the budgets to go up, budget to go up from 2018, which is the table. In, the library budget will go up in 2019. We have made, in basically three areas, the largest area, of course, is in the payroll area, and that is because we have, during 2018, we made the position of library director a full-time position with some benefits. The, the library is an, is its own employer, it is not part of the town pool of employees. So, we sought through Health Trust to establish a, a health benefit and in 2018, we will continue that for all of 2008, or 2019, we'll continue it through the year. And also add short-term disability, long-term disability, and life insurance, which really is under $1,000. The biggest share of that amount is in health insurance, of course. The plan that we elected matched the town plan in 2018. It went up 10 and a half percent. We are going to remain on that plan and where the amount that we are proposing from the town for 2019 exactly matches the amount budgeted for 2017. Because in 2018, we had a decrease in that line item of about $14,000 or $15,000. So, we're bringing it back up to that.
As far as Health Trust, do you buy it as a separate entity?
We do. We're part of the small group pool.
Right.
As Dunbarton Town is too, but we must buy it individually because we have our employer ID number.
Because we changed our plan this year.
And what did you change it to?
I can send you the plan number that we adopted.
Just as, as that.
Yeah, it, yeah, and the, the plan, even that would only account for what the library is providing. We provide for a single coverage today, so we're not providing any family benefits as yet. We're still developing our personnel benefits package.
So, really, the personnel is very similar to what it was in 2017 when you had more than one employee?
Precisely.
Excellent, okay.
The other item, the other two line items that change of some significance is, you know, license for QuickBooks, the accounting package of $700. And in the computer contract for the support, changes about $1,300.
I would ask one other item be added as far as utilities. There's a potential for a requirement for a second line, telephone line be added, because the alarm system is, is acting funny, so.
You know, we had a second line some years ago.
Yeah, well, it may need to require a dedicated line, so I would probably add, plus up a couple hundred dollars for a second line.
Thank you.
The line might still be there, but it's inactive, so.
Right. I remember this discussion we had about this, I'm saying, three years ago.
We're working, working out the kinks, a very similar problem with the town library is using one telephone line and it has created havoc. I saw a telephone bill for eight, how many times, it's called in an alarm, it's like almost 100 calls for one month. And so, it's very similar problems are probably up in the library, so I would at least consider that.
Okay, yeah.
And the thing is, you have a telephone right now, $650, that's for the line itself?
Yes.
So, we add, I would probably add a plus 650 to that for the, for the second line.
Okay.
I'm going to pencil that in.
Not familiar with some of these girls.
Bob, do you have any questions?
No.
Dave?
No, I, I see that your increase is about.
I have 16,000, so we're only responsible for the one line that says Town of Dunbarton at the top, Dave. This is everything that they're combining that is a breakdown of their expenses.
Yeah.
So, if you go back up to the top, you see the bottom just below or above the town income, total income, Town of Dunbarton, that's what they would request that we pay them.
$104,012.
Okay.
That's the town share.
Again, I liked last year better when it went down.
We liked it too. We liked it, but it, I think we will agree that what the library has become, the trustees have, have sought to make our librarian take more charge of that and it's, it's, the programs have expanded enormously. Libraries throughout the country are changing, as you know, and Dunbarton's been right in the thick of that whole thing. It's become much more of a community center and.
It's a hub of activities.
It's a hub of activity and our expectation is for our library director to be able to handle, to, to wear many, many hats, including covering the snow in the steps. Not all librarians do that, but Mary has particular talent on that one.
But I think you basically offset it with, by eliminating, reducing the part-time help.
We did.
And so, you have the.
It was a, it was a whole change, just a new paradigm in staffing in 2016.
Okay. I have no further questions, I say thank you. I, I think everything's pretty straightforward, Bob, are you free?
There's one more thing.
Okay.
And I don't believe that you've met, you've met Sarah Anderson, who's our newest board member.
Seen her around.
And you know Phil Kimball, our chair.
Martha Wilson.
Martha Wilson.
No, it's nice to see a building being used.
Thank you.
No, but they're sit there and nobody wants to go in them.
Right. And we have to, I think it's fair to say that, you know, it's been a very cooperative relationship that we've had with, with the board and recently and it's been very, very nice.
How are you at Giselle May? How are you at Giselle May?
But just, uh, as a courtesy, we may be doing some, we did some exterior work this past year, but we may do some interior work this year, and that's to be determined, so just be aware of that. And some of the interior work may be not in the library, main area, upstairs.
Okay.
And, uh, again, utilities are always a challenge, leave it at that. Okay. I have no further questions, if you gentlemen would. I will let you all go, and thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Come on, it was painful.
If you can just let me know, the name of that is curious, the, they, the.
Six fifty for a second.
Oh, yes.
Can I sit back on my head?
Oh, yeah, very well, very well.
I think you're right, it was not about words. Yeah. They started fine, very well.
Linda, come on up.
Summer, do you know they're coming in tonight?
Yep.
Well, Lee?
Don Marshall's wearing his other guy.
Oh, okay. I was looking for a whole group. They sent in lone soldier. Here's where all our records are.
I do need one further minutes, we're gonna use our time, so.
So much to talk about. Let me know when you're ready.
You have the table, you have the owners.
Okay, okay.
But they, you can go through the highlights and we.
Start at the top with the worksheet. Um, town clerk would reflect the two percent CPI. Deputy town clerk, I'd like to increase our hours. Elections, we do have one election next year, thank goodness, unless there are no special, any, any special elections, which is a rare occurrence. Then the meals, of course, that drops because there's only one election, not three. The annual population control fees, the dog license fees, the marriage, and the vitals, those are all statutory requirements, uh, just based on how many dog licenses we issue, the state gets a cut, and same for marriage licenses and certified abstracts of vital records. I included a page for you folks, um, to show you the revenue and the transaction history for the past five years.
What you noticed on the bottom here, carry over three hundred?
Oh, that's right, I forgot about record preservation, I was gonna talk about that a little more in depth at the end, would you like us to go back to that?
Okay.
Just go with the, the town clerk budget at this point right now?
Is there a way to carry it over, Lee?
If you have a contract, it's.
Yeah, it's gotta be encumbered.
It has to be encumbered, okay.
So if you have a contract, we can recover that amount?
I do not have a contract, I'm still gathering some figures and looking for some quotes and trying to decide the best and most economical way to preserve. Do you wanna go right to record preservation and go back to town clerk budget?
No, I just wanted to see if you had a method.
I thank you for asking that question, because that was gonna be mine. So for town clerk, if you look at the revenue and transaction history, um, I didn't wanna make it an entire year for the previous four, then only eleven months for two thousand eighteen, so I broke it down to give you just January to November for the past five years. So you're comparing apples to apples, and you can see a tremendous increase in revenue, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars or more in the past five, from five years ago. Partially due to the economy, and it's also, I would think mostly due to the increase in our population, people having more vehicles, larger families, more toys.
Newer vehicles. Price or, price of the vehicles, tell.
That, that's why I said.
Increased prices, yeah.
Yeah, increased prices of the vehicles, I mean, there are a lot of contributing factors in it, but that's a heck of a lot of money for a small town. Been to accurately reflect without taking price of vehicles into consideration, I did a grant, a chart for the transaction history, um, and that's also January through November, so that's each year represents eleven months, so we're comparing eleven months to eleven months across the board. You can see the number of transactions has also increased quite a bit, and that, of course, has nothing to do with the price of the vehicles.
These are just pure numbers.
These are just pure numbers, to let you know how much business, minus the dollars, comes through my office, and I hope to point this out, really the need for increasing the deputies' hours. It's a lot of work, uh, as you know, there's been a lot of, um, ups and downs with the deputy position these past few years, I'd like to get it back on track, there was a time when I had a deputy for more than twelve hours a week, and that was shaken up a few years back, and I'd like to get us back on track. Right now, I have a phenomenal deputy, uh, and I see some great potential for finally coming up out of the quagmire that I've been struggling to keep my head above, uh, pretty much being a one-person shop. Did you have any questions specific to the town clerk portion of the budget?
Are you working forty hours a week?
I am working forty hours, give or take, sometimes more, sometimes less.
That reporting's gotta, we have to have a quarterly reporting, or at least a, a recording of hours to the town newsletter, so she can forward your hours after the requirements.
I was just gonna give it to you all at the end of the year, if you'd rather have it quarterly, I can do that too.
Or would you be more convenient, I'll leave right with you?
I just think that it, it could get lost if you, if you wait until the end of the year.
Because I thought yesterday was before, when I was working on it, I said I was just gonna use library's template, but I didn't understand some of the dates, and you said just ahead and right over it, so I have been keeping it up.
You're, so you keep maintaining Renzo?
Absolutely, absolutely.
It's just I don't wanna be caught, I don't want you to be caught and shorted hours into things, and then.
There's no, no worry about me shorting hours, trust me.
I just wanna make sure we.
Yeah.
She needs her requirement.
But yeah, you just let me know, if you want it quarterly, then I will give it to you quarterly.
Yeah.
Does that matter for you?
I know the whole report is just summarized by the month, because I have to report retirees by the month, by the twelfth of the month.
Do you want me to just give it to you monthly instead?
Monthly.
I can do that too.
All right.
Sure.
So we got it on the record monthly?
Yeah.
Yeah, and then I can just export that with the other.
Absolutely.
It just makes it, it cleans up, so there's no issues with the state.
See, it's because I'm unaware of how she does it, I, so, so now I know.
I've got two pieces, and this will be the third piece.
I can give that to you monthly. But right now, you're just gonna get, because it's almost the end of the year.
Might just finish, finish up this year, we'll start twenty nineteen, just, yeah, there's no sense in.
Yeah, I can do that.
All right, great, and.
Any more questions on the regular part of the budget?
Right now, the hours that you have for the deputy town clerk, how many hours do you have now, you have a twelve?
Well, I had been budgeting for twelve, but as you know, like, the previous, uh, the one didn't work out, and didn't stay, and the one before that had some health problems.
Would you previously have fifteen, right?
Years ago, I had fifteen.
And that's what you budgeted here?
Uh, sixteen.
Sixteen.
We're finding that sixteen works well.
I think that's what you're trying to get at, I might.
Yep, exactly, thank you. Okay, and we go to the second part now.
So one more thing, also, I mean, did this for me, did I give you, you do have a copy of miscellaneous notes?
Yeah, we're doing the back.
To make sure that.
Yeah, I'm keeping it, that's on my side.
Because some of that stuff comes out of the man's budget, but at the bottom of that page, under miscellaneous notes, a couple other things I wanted to, um, just to bring up. Part of it, uh, Select Mendol was at the joint laws meeting that we had recently, and we were discussing the ergonomic problems related to the way the town clerk's office is laid out. Right now, when I, we talked about it last year too, we kinda touched on it, so Hope has been wonderful, she and I have been, uh, turning around some ideas, we've done a little bit of rearranging, but the, the biggest problems are still the fact that we're sitting, our customers are standing. So we're sitting there, and we are looking up, and that puts a heck of a lot of strain on your vertebrae, you know, right in your neck, um, so we, we really need to be standing. And our other problem is reaching the printer, every single time we print a registration, we have to reach up and over because it's such a huge printer. Hope and I have, uh, I've got some ideas on reworking it, we wanna do it as inexpensively as possible, using as much of what we have as we can. We involved Mike Cummings, the building inspector, we talked about taking that, uh, it's almost like a countertop right now, on top of two file cabinets, and we talked about elevating that to give us a standing station, and Mike said he could build some little cubbies under it, so we have places, so, so we don't use so much of our landscape, which we really need our work area, and we can get rid of some of those stackable files, you know, if we had some cubbies, uh, and have a lot more workspace. The two file cabinets that are in existence, one has a broken lock, and one, the other lock is, the other one, the lock is almost gone, so we would need to get two file cabinets. We're thinking, two file cabinets, use the existing countertop, elevate it, and Hope and I will rearrange things so that it works better for us, and of course, we'd need a, a, a stool, like a little stool with a back on it, and Joe Marie is a great shopper, and I know she could find something that's not outrageously expensive to accommodate that.
We should, we should work on that in our building maintenance budget.
And that's what I'm thinking. Because I really am feeling the strain in my shoulder from the constant high rechange.
Friend, we're at the meeting, Mike Cummings suggested that you can take a look at, you know, the approximate cost, and hopefully it's just have a pile come back and do it.
Okay. Just need, I'd like to have a dollar figure before the, before the second one.
Because we're, you'd have to talk to Mike about that, and just have the file cabinets share. So keep that Joe Marie work on something like that.
Now, Linda, if we're elevating it, I know the file cabinet you have now are two drawers, it would be wise to get the three drawer ones, even though you don't use that bottom drawer.
Well, I was looking at three drawer cabinets, and they would put it too high.
Oh, they would, okay.
I've, I've already gone through several office supply companies, and looked at three drawer, and they would just make it too high, and, um, I.
So if you could get, Lee, the file cabinet numbers you need.
Okay.
And then get Mike Cummings to get the rest of that number together, and just come back to the board with that number, so we can put it in our building maintenance budget for next year.
Put a stool in there too.
Yeah, put a stool in there.
Just do it all-inclusive, so we kinda know where we're going.
Yeah.
And the second one is the fireproof cabinet you mentioned too?
Yes, well, that would go into like more of the record preservation, possibly, so I wanted to finish up the town clerk part first.
Okay, okay, I have a little question, sorry.
Correct. So, yeah, so as far as elevating that, it really is, and Hope is even more vertically challenged than I am, so the strain, if I am feeling the strain on me, I know it's gonna be even greater strain on her physically, the way it's currently laid out.
Can I just ask a question on something? So you're not looking to get a raised desk that just moves up and moves down?
It wouldn't work for what we do, I, we, I've looked at, I've gone, uh, looked at the, the catalogs that we get, and I've searched the internet, and you, no, they wouldn't, it just wouldn't work. They're, they're great because they're inexpensive, but they really wouldn't be the right tool for what we do.
Well, Mike, Mike, could I come up with a design and estimate the cost?
Yeah. Could I, just elevating with a two by ten on the bottom or something?
Okay, so now, record preservation. You answered my question on not being able to carry over that three hundred dollars. What we're, we're looking at now, and I've just got my wonderful Donna, who comes in every week and works on, you know, a lot of the, uh, the things that are given to the town, and she's cataloging, but we're also in research, we also do refer to the records that we have on file, and she's pointed, this, this, I think, had been referred to as David Tenny's journal, we didn't think we had it, and I don't know whoever called it David Tenny's journal, but some pages that Bud had referred to as David Tenny's journal wound up being in here. So this is labeled library records from seventeen fifty-two to eighteen eighty, it's not just library records, there are other things in here. And the condition, the book is, um, it's kinda cool to see in the beginning, had been preserved by Brown's River, I don't know when, but it was when Irene Tallheimer was deputy town clerk. So I've been in office over twenty years, she was clerk for twenty-four years, so this was preserved a long, long time ago. What we have is, you can see where they had, they had done some repairs when they preserved it, I think they had sprayed it, everything that they had done is actually listed in the back of the book, what they had done. Preservation has changed a lot in fifty years, and the book itself physically is in great shape, but our big concern is the fading of the pages. There are, some pages are nice and dark and legible, uh, some pages though, and I didn't mark it, but there are some that you can barely read anymore, they're just so faded, so we're losing the information, so we need to capture this information. I don't know that, I mean, we can send it out and have it digitized, Donna thought one thing that might work to stop it from going any further, because you see, we've also got bleed-through from the red, uh, we just got a lot there that needs to be done. What they had done with one of the other books, one of the other older books, this was also done when Irene was deputy, was they, they took this falling apart book, and they just took it out of the binding completely, and sleeved each page, and it sleeved in the special, uh.
Can I ask?
Well, it's, it's not the.
PH neutral.
It's pH neutral, but this is also, uh, special to stop the, the, the light from, that's it, the UV film.
Archival paper.
Right, it's, it's, well, it's, it's, the paper is whatever the paper is.
No, no.
It just.
It's, it, the sleeve is archival paper.
Right, it's an archival UV, right.
You put, you put paper money in the same type of thing.
In the UV film, and that's helped preserve, you know, this ancient book. To do that with this, I can't even imagine what it would cost for this one book, like, just off the log, that's just over a thousand dollars. So we've been trying to come up with some ideas on how to preserve the, the data without going to the expense of doing this, and, um.
Don't they do it in microfiche?
They can microfilm it, but do we have a microfilm reader? Those are thousands of dollars, I think I priced them years ago, and I believe they were well over three thousand dollars.
And digitizing, you were talking, you mentioned that?
And digitizing it is also another way, uh, to do it, you'd have to find a company in, well, that's probably about seven or eight hundred dollars for them to open it up, take the picture, you know, turn the page, take the picture. And put it on a disk.
Yep.
There are just so many different ways it can be done, but.
How many volumes like this?
We'd have to go look.
So who would?
There's a, I mean, this is the, one of the older, older ones.
Okay.
So obviously, we wanna go to the oldest, most.
The ones that are fading.
The ones, before we lose the data.
Okay.
Okay? We had, um, we had talked about getting a camera setup, New London, Donna's gone to New London, and, uh, visited the folks up there, they have the camera, and this, this special, did a tripod, it needs special weights to hold the pages down, um, not so much the weight, it's what they're made of, uh, there, there's special equipment. The cost for that, um, just the camera alone is about four hundred and fifty dollars, and then you get the tripod and the other things, and that's why I was hoping to carry over that three hundred, and maybe put seven hundred in the budget, so we can at least get started. And with the, hopefully with Hope and I, if we get into a good system, can start dedicating an hour or two a week to just finding a place and setting up, and starting to take our own pictures, and put them on a disk, or just preserve them somehow, so we're not losing the data.
Wouldn't it be better to send it out to have it professionally done?
But if you buy, for, for what it costs to do one book, you can, good.
Money, well, she, what she's saying is, then you could do all of them yourself.
For what.
Versus one book.
Right, for what it costs to do one book.
Yeah.
We could maybe buy the equipment.
Yeah.
Do it with our own manpower. We could maybe buy the equipment and do it with our own manpower. And it's not just going to be these that are going to need to be done. I do all of our minutes, things that we don't have on the, electronically right now. There's volumes and volumes of minutes that need to be done.
So hence that's the four hundred, the three extra three hundred.
Right, I'm thinking that would maybe start us with a, a camera and a setup. And there's a person in town who has said that if we could get that, they would consider throwing in another three hundred dollars towards it as a donation.
Can I say something?
Sure.
About this? Well, you know, I was, I talked to Donna about this a few days ago. You know, three hundred dollars, you get nothing for that three hundred dollars. So it's almost like you put it on, on, in the budget, but you can't really use it because there's nothing you can do with three hundred.
Just been buying us, you know, archival paper.
Yeah, you really, you're never going to get anything done with that except for what she said, you know, minimal things. And that's why I mentioned to Donna, maybe if you can carry it over or at least raise the budget or something. Because, you know, it's kind of like the, the rec committee years ago would carry over all their money. And then you could do something with it. Well, they got to the point where they were getting a nice little nest egg there. There's no money here, that three hundred dollars, you can see they didn't spend any of it. None of it was spent, because what are you going to buy with three hundred dollars?
We've been buying paper sleeves.
Right, there's not much you can do with it. To, to do preservation is not a lot of stuff you can do, you know, buy gloves, you know?
Exactly.
So that's what I thought, maybe this line should be increased or carried over. So eventually you can do something, as Linda said, you know?
Will it stay carried over?
The carried over.
Correct. Then we just increase it to seven hundred.
This is what I was thinking, I'm going to say this out loud.
Sure.
If you've got us proper numbers on the camera and the equipment to run it. Okay, then there's excess money in twenty eighteen budget. Can that be encumbered? If she gets a proper.
If you guys approve of larger expense than what is budgeted there, then you can do that.
All right, so see what I'm saying, Mike, instead of worrying about twenty nineteen budget, there's excess money right here in our budget. That if she actually got the paperwork together before the end of the year, it could be encumbered out of our existing budget. If we approved it.
Okay, this was just, Donna's just been emailing me, so I barely had a chance to review these. But the camera that they had talked about was four hundred and twenty-five dollars.
But I'm, I'm looking at, I'm looking at the camera and, you know, a camera alone's not going to do anything either.
This is camera, flames.
Right, so.
This is like the package.
There's still three payrolls for both top lines.
Okay.
Okay. And what is, these are accurate, it's sixty-two, I entered those today.
I barely had a chance to read through these, you can see they, they just came in this afternoon.
Yeah, so instead of giving it to us tonight, Linda, get that all together, maybe come back to us.
For the package.
If you're good, if you're good with that?
Yes, same with your desk, you know, that way we have a dollar figure to look at and then.
It should be before December thirty-first.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, so we can encumber it, because if we don't have anything to tie it to, it goes in a general fund, correct?
Right.
And then, and going on what Leo's saying, maybe we look at increasing that budget line. So that way we can kind of step forward, because as you have this equipment, unless you have the right stuff to utilize it, it's just sitting there anyway.
Because that's probably more than a thou, I got to tell you.
That's what I love to do.
Because when you get cargo paper for your paper money, it's expensive, that's probably more than a thousand dollars.
That was what I said, just off the, off the hand and maybe over a grand.
Yeah.
It's very hard to get anything accomplished in the restoration. Because like I said earlier, there's no money to use, so you can't really move forward to get anything done. All you can do is go over the papers, see what we have, maybe, you know, document what you've got, you know?
But you could even get volunteers if you have the equipment.
If you had the equipment, it would be, as I said before, as she was telling you, you could use it for a lot of things, not just that book. You understand? So now you're ahead of the game. And you could, little by little, do some of this and get it done. Versus, you know, you know, just wishing, because with a, with a budget like this, you only wish.
What we need is a complete package price, so we buy what you have to do to get it functioning, up and running.
I will, I will make it happen.
So in other words, next year you can't come out and say, hey, we missed a hundred and thirty-five dollar item. You know, so try and get it increased length.
Not try to get anything together.
Gloves, table, chair, lights, electrical cords.
I can encumber funds with estimates.
Okay.
Or, so that I have something to work with. If you are going to get a deal after the fact and you buy something for two hundred dollars less, that's okay too. But at least this removes the money out of the budget and holds it in a.
So next week I will work on putting a package together and I can just pass it to you.
Yep, yep.
Because I'm not going to be here next Thursday.
That's fine.
Okay, that's fine.
So that's, anyway, I know it's kind of last minute on that, but I said to Donna, we didn't spend any money, are we good with everything? And, and we are right now with our paper supplies, we're fine. But we've been talking about this book and she just jumped right on finding out what our alternatives were for sending it out. For one, for what we pay for one book, we can buy the equipment and do all of it. We've also talked in the past about the fact that we do need to put together a municipal records committee. I've taken a couple courses this year just on some preservation, not paper preservation, but information preservation. We'll discuss that at a later date. There's a lot in this office that needs to be digitized somehow and put in the cloud or someplace else. Because right now, you know, these are the only copies we have. I don't know if I really had this put on microfilm. I have not come across any, any microfilm I did come across has already been sent to the state archives for, for safekeeping. Because they're more, better equipped to handle that than we have, than we are. So that's the scoop on that. The other thing about the fireproof cabinet, what I'm proposing to do this year, instead of trying to get the money from the town for that, is when the next round of moose plate grants come up, I will apply, I will put in an application for a grant to try to get us a filed cabinet. But in the meantime, last year we folks had discussed the need to shore up the floor because of the weight. And I do not remember if anything ever came from that or not, okay. So just to let you know, that hasn't died yet, but I will try to get a grant for the fireproof.
We were faced with, there's multiple buildings in town that really need attention before anything else, so. But going to that, getting an estimate for that, you're probably going to come out ahead, I think, if you get the proper equipment. Then what it costs to do one book, so.
And that was my intent.
You know.
And that was Donna's idea.
So if you can get an estimate and with a number, we can encumber the money. And that would make that more feasible than, you know, we'll just let that slide by and say, you know, you miss it by a day. And unfortunately, our hands are tired.
Right, no, I understand.
And estimates, estimate would be enough to make it happen. Leo, you have one more comment, please?
Yeah, well, I was trying to comment, well, yeah. Um, back to the fireproof cabinets. We met with the Bo.
Heritage Commission.
Heritage Commission, and they bought two for four hundred dollars.
Where did they get them?
I forget, I'm really trying to remember where was Donna and those.
How old are they? How old are they?
Oh, they look brand new. They weren't brand new, but they look brand new.
And what are they rated?
And, and when they told us it was four hundred dollars and we were like amazed that it was that cheap. And Donna said four hundred dollars a piece and they said, no, for both of them.
They had to have been, because I had been writing, they were like thirty-five hundred dollars.
They were fireproof and we were both amazed.
There's a lot of used furniture, office furniture pieces.
But Donna knows where it is, she might, she probably made a note of it. I can't remember where, what they, where they said it was, it was in Manchester.
Dawn, you can get the ties on filing cabinets like that at these auctions, especially the state auction down here where they have the equipment, office equipment, stuff like that. Chichester where they have an auction there quite often. And you can get stuff, you know, ten cents on the dollar. And a lot of it's brand new. And the one thing I saw, I went up there with Tom Casano. And there was like the yellow jackets that our, our people wear, the park is and stuff like that, working on the roads. Well, they had like a hundred of them. Well, one guy goes in there and he bids, he says, okay, twenty-five dollars a piece. So then everybody else can buy them at twenty-five dollars a piece. You know, how many do you want? I'll take ten, I'll take five, you know, whatever. And the same goes with the cabinets, these auctions and that, so. Not that many people buy the fireproof auction, or cabinets.
Well, thank you.
But.
And we were amazed with that and so we thought, wow, what a savings that would be, you know?
That would be incredible.
I can talk to Tom and he, 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 there's a lot of the stuff that's online. He spends a lot of time online doing this, so you could just bid online to pick this stuff up.
You can send me the links on where you do all of that, that would be super.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Find out what the ones, the fireproof sites they have that are made with pumice instead of with concrete. Because the concrete one's only good to eighteen hundred degrees for a couple hours. The pumice, they use, now they use those even in, in the bags.
You're going to have to worry this building will be gone in eighteen years.
Well, pumice is because it's a volcanic stone.
Yeah.
So it shields it more from heat than concrete does. Concrete absorbs the heat and then sooner or later, whatever's inside is going up in smoke too.
Okay, any other questions for Linda before we leave? Okay, Linda, thank you.
Thank you.
Will we touch this question?
Get those numbers to us by the end of the year for.
Sooner the better, I, I have to say not the thirty-first, make it the day before.
My vacation's starting next Thursday evening, so.
Perfect time to do it.
Let Donna, let Donna do that.
Let Donna do what?
Come and put the package in.
She's, she's the one that sent me all this stuff already.
Let her put it together.
Okay, now we're ready for Dawn. Key thing is a source, just a source in price. I could almost, I could, I could.
Look at invoice.
Tell Donna to wash that and.
She does.
I know she does.
Okay, Dawn, you're up.
Okay.
She's got one more copy here for you. The worker bees with you tonight, Dawn?
No.
They all jacked out, huh?
Yeah, they're sitting down here so you guys can beat me up. I think, do you have copies of our budget?
Yes.
Yep. Yep, okay.
Seem to hit the rock wallet says.
Yeah. This budget stuff is all new to me, so have mercy on me. Basically, what I'm trying to do and our trustees are trying to do is improve, you know, make some improvements. Last year, we're all newbies, so we, we don't know where the money's at, you know, and we're just finding it out. At the center cemetery, this is the Cremains Garden that we've been trying to get. I can't get anybody to give me a bid, you know, on it. And I've got one guy that I'm really going after. He did my sidewalks and I know he does good work. I just have to get him out, but a lot of it has to be hand dug. All the aisles and everything have to be hand dug because of the, you know, the, the lines have to be straight and everything else. So you got thirty-three feet of hand digging there and then you have the back part which we can use equipment in. But getting somebody to bid it is another thing. Now we have.
What are you, just out of curiosity, you must have an idea of what you, what it would cost for me?
That's what I'm trying to buy.
You have no idea, okay.
Yeah, if it's, you know, I've got roughly fifteen hundred square feet. And you figure six inches deep, you know, I don't know how that works out in the yards, I'm not into the contract. And I'm trying to get a, a, a figure, you know, anything. But I'm thinking somewhere around six grand or something like that, I don't know.
Okay.
Dave, what do you think?
How big was it?
Well, it's about fifteen hundred square feet of concrete.
You got a lot of concrete there.
Yeah, and then, you know, four to six inches deep, depending. I don't know.
No, I think that for the concrete cost, that's not bad, but the, I think the prep work's going to involve quite a bit more of like you said.
Right, it's all, it's all physical. Because you can't really get in there with equipment. And Keith Pollack, who has KSP concrete, why, his son came out and looked at it. But Keith wants to come out and see how deep the loam is and stuff like that. And we got snow before he could make it, so.
So it's still working, partners.
Yeah, I left him a message yesterday to see, you know, it says, right now there's no snow on the property and that, so come on out, let's take a look, you know?
This is Center Cemetery, so that's a.
That's right, out back here, yeah. But we've got five benches. We had a thousand dollar donation that we had to use before the end of the year. And so we're going to put benches at the end of each double row. And they're sixty inches long. And they won't be engraved except for the center one. And the person that's going to have that engraved, well, they're going to be paying for the bench, the installation, the delivery and the engrave fee. So eventually, if somebody wants to have a bench, well, the bench is there, we can have it engraved for you. But this is what it's going to cost, so roughly a thousand and change right in there per bench. So we'll recoup that money. But we're going to put it there so they all match, so we don't have, you know, try to keep it aesthetically good looking.
Is that, how come I'll add this separated?
Huh? Three feet. So you got three feet by thirty-three, you know, and.
Like these are grouped up double Y, double Y, double Y and two singles.
And then the one up there, you've got the extra aisle, they separated. Don't tell me what, I don't know. This is done before I was there.
Oh, okay.
But there's markers, stainless steel markers in the ground at the end of each aisle, you know, to mark them. But this will define it. And hopefully, I will be able to increase our sales there once people see how nice it is. Because right now, you know, seventy-five dollars for a cremation plot per single. You know, it's very inexpensive, we got.
Where are you going to get in the ground, Mike?
We got maybe ten percent sold right now.
Obviously, and there's no, no concrete around them.
No, there's nothing around them.
Just grass.
Yeah, so the big grass and of course, everything has to be, you know, so they can mow over it and stuff like that. That's the whole point, but it'll, it'll define it better.
How far do they protrude out of the ground at all?
Huh?
Do they protrude out of the ground?
No, it could be able to mow over it.
Yeah, it got to be able to mow.
So it's low, it's flush.
Ground level, flush, you got. So. That's, that's.
Benses would be a nice idea, nice setting.
But I'm, I'm working on getting, if nothing else, I'll try to get volunteers and we'll all go out and dig it, you know, if I can find somebody to pour it. I had one guy come and bid it for, or look at it anyway, but he says, I won't do the digging. Keith has people that does dig, knows the digging, can do it physically.
Give you the name of the guy that will do the digging.
And so that's, I come, I'm pursuing him and he did my sidewalk and I know his quality of his work, so. But I've, I've got a list of people on my benchy.
Let's go to the top of your budget then. We'll just.
Okay.
So cemetery maintenance, I see you maintain everything pretty much the same, except that cemetery improvements are one of the most here.
Yeah, that's, that's where it's all at, everything else is the same. And that's because we need to, we want to put a road in the pages corner. If, if you've ever driven out there, it's hard to define where you can drive, where you can't drive. And you've got the Cremains Garden as you come in the, the south entrance there. And people, they don't know it's Cremains Garden.
I track them.
Yeah, and so we had Jeff come out and, you know, he's figuring, you know, you know, dig out the, the road bed. And all that loam, he'll haul it away at no charge and that, because he's got a use for it. And that saves us a lot of money there. And then he's going to lay in a bed, put in a, some type of material underneath it and then build it up from there. But it'll last a long time. It's not like it's going to be heavy use. But we do the parking lot across the backside, there between the old and the new, and then back out the south drive. And that would be the initial phase one. Phase two, we'll do in front of the, the shed there. There, there's a road there also, but that's not as important. I think if we put the U in first, why wouldn't you say that, uh.
He's already given you a quote on that?
Yeah, yeah, thirteen five.
Thirteen five, I'm just looking at how much money you have left in the budget.
You can encumber the sum of that money.
Right now, you put it down payment on the contract, but this year's budget is that we can lower your budget for twenty nineteen.
You follow us, instead of putting it back in the general fund, you could encumber even a portion, you could phase one and phase two it. One, you could do the digging out and prep and then the other half of twenty nineteen you could do that. So they don't have to do the work, Dawn, but you can encumber the money.
Paying, like paying in advance.
Okay, so the six thousand dollars that we have.
That's what you've used.
We, we could use that, I was gonna use it if I encumbered this year, but see, that's from selling plots, isn't it?
No, no, we're talking about if you look at your, if you look at your twenty eighteen budget, you have fifteen seven. You've only spent fifty-nine-hundred-and-sixty dollars of it.
I gotta feel, well, we got.
I think we still have outstanding mowing.
Yeah.
Invoices.
We just, we just paid one.
So then this needs to be updated, cause it has not been updated.
But, but e- even at that, it's, mowing can't be, is that gonna?
It's nine hundred, uh, just under a thousand dollars.
Yeah, so we're saying you're gonna have, you're gonna have, uh, somewhere's in the range of.
Eight thousand?
Eight, eight or nine thousand dollars left over in this year's budget that you haven't tapped into.
Yeah. Part of it is, is that it's over ten thousand, so I'm gonna put it out to bid.
Yeah, but you're getting, listen to me, phase one, phase two it. In other words, there's two ways you could, you can take and do part of that, like the prep work of that roadway, all right? And this year, and encumber the money for him to do it in the spring. And then the second part of that could be putting down the gravel and finishing the roadway.
Okay.
Just like, if you look at how we did Grapevine Road, we didn't do it all in one year, we did phase one, phase two, okay? You can do the same thing with your budget so that you're encumbering this year's budget, if you can get that broken down.
Okay.
Can I explain it? I did that with the cemetery trustees a few years back when I did the, the fencing. They encumbered the money for the materials and, and, and that was in December. And then they pay, then the, the labor was paid the following budget year. So that's what they're trying to tell you.
Yeah. Somebody showed me how to do it.
Yeah, I, I am working with, I've been a little bit tied up with some of the other committees, but he also has other resources to enable him to meet that thirteen thousand dollars without totally impacting the operating budget. Because we've deposited about, is it ten grand into the expendable cemetery trust.
No, there's sixty, six thousand.
Six thousand in that one, but that's not this money here that you're asking for.
Not on there.
No, but if the bid's thirteen thousand, you could just, as, as Leo said, we, you could purchase, pre-purchase materials now at this prices with this year's money and pay for labor next year now.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be delivered.
Right.
Oh, okay.
You could say they delivered it at the yard.
Can you work with him and show him how to encumber that?
Right?
Yeah, who, who, okay, one question for you. You mentioned the road at Page's Corner, then you started to talk about another road, is that in this cemetery, Center Cemetery?
No, 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 no.
Everything, they have a cremains over there?
That would be a year down the line or something, we'll see how this one goes, we'll get this, the U in there first.
Where, at the Page's Corner? Is there a cremains over there as well?
There's what?
A cremains garden over there?
Yes.
Oh, see, I didn't know that, so, okay.
And it has both single and double, uh.
Okay.
The only difference is because you're going over the ten thousand dollar mark, you probably would be better off to use a phase one and phase two. Yeah. Like we did with the building here, the safety complex. We weren't sure about the money, so we had them do one side and then we found we had enough money and we did phase two, which was the other side. But at least that would give you the road, you know, the basic road going in and then finishing the road would become a phase two.
And that way your budget won't be a spike.
Yeah, so that you're using this money here, some of this money here, which helps you reduce next year's budget.
Yeah.
And you're getting it done.
So, okay, so I'm gonna ask you to work with Lean, we'll re, we, we'll relook your budget again. Bring all, you have to get all your moment expenses in there, so we got a final number. And then Jeff's got a, your contract, whoever you're contracted with, have them break it down. I wanna buy the materials this year, give me an invoice for it. She encumbers the money, we'll take the delivery in the springtime.
Okay, that way it'd be under ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, you got it.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay.
Next, then things will pay for next year, you're gonna put a budget line, it'll be just the labor, your, your budget will come down for twenty nineteen.
Okay.
It'll look good.
We'll try and make it look good, yeah.
That works for me.
So I'm tied up tomorrow, but maybe Monday, Tuesday or Wednesday next week?
Yeah.
And we can sit down and we'll just really crunch the numbers.
Yeah.
And then, you said Jeff's gonna do the work.
Yeah, I, I like to keep it with Jeff, keep it local.
Oh, he does a great job, I mean.
I would just, I would ask you to make an appointment with her rather than just walk in.
Oh, yeah, definitely, definitely.
Yeah.
So.
That's what happens, everybody walks in.
If you make an appointment, she can shut the door and work with you in here without interruptions.
Yeah.
Leo, I have a question for Dawn, actually. So why does that concrete slab have to be six inches thick, I'm just curious?
Oh, I'm, I'm, I'm just using that for a rough figure.
What is, what is the concrete for?
It's, uh, here, I'll show you.
Yeah, I don't have that, Dave.
So walk away.
I don't have that. Oh, so, so four inches is plenty.
Yeah, four inches, whatever.
Four inches, six inches, you can park, drive trucks on it.
See, it's not just concrete, it's gonna have a pebble finish on it.
Right, I'm just saying, but the, the six inches, when you go down to four inches, you save a lot of money on concrete.
Yeah.
You know, that's, six inch.
Is, six inches is twenty-eight yards right now.
Well, I think it's over thirty actually, but, but whatever, whatever, the thing is, four inches, you're taking a third off, you know?
We're, we're trying to.
Alright, I was just curious, when you said six inches, like, that's like a base for something big, you know?
So I, I would, as far as your budget.
It is more than that.
I would, uh, put a place over it for at least, uh, some of the work to be done in the cemetery, cremains garden.
Okay.
I would put a place over from the twenty nineteen budget. But the thing is, I don't want your budget to double in size, so we have to use this year's money if we can.
Okay.
As we've discussed, do phase one, whatever you roll.
Yeah, keep it from going back to the general fund.
Right.
Okay.
Because I, I, the voters, the voters are gonna say, you know, right now you're at twenty thousand and we haven't had a cemetery, uh, the cremains garden there.
Yeah.
Why are we doubling the?
Yeah.
Cause no one's living on these, we don't do it. The voters are more flock at that.
Okay, uh, the other thing is that right by the, the wall in Page's Corner, it's a low area and it holds water there. And we need to do something with drainage to keep that from backing up because number one, you can't even drive in it cause it gets real mushy and that's right where the road is.
Right, right.
And it goes around there in the front.
And have you got a solution for that, money, money solution for that?
Oh.
Do you have a money solution for that?
Oh, yeah.
No, 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 not yet.
I have no idea.
Okay.
So I get, you know, what, you know, whether the town could do it or, uh, do we have people that do culverts and?
That's our road agent, that's it.
Okay.
I, I would have him put his road agent hat on, not his contractor, but have his road agent hat on, I'll see what it would take.
Okay.
And that's at the Page's Corner again?
Page's Corner, yeah.
And it's right when you drive in?
Four inches. Back in the south field, right along the wall, the roof wall, the, the rock wall, fence on thirteen. That's, that's where it sinks down.
The thing is, uh, we could probably have him do the labor as far as the town maintenance is crew and then have your, you pave the materials.
Yeah.
We'll see how that will work out.
Yeah.
But we need to revisit this and so I, we have a mechanism, it's really slow, but have your budget done.
Okay, I'll get with Lean and that will give us a better idea. I'll give Jeff a call and get the material price and give us an invoice on it.
Right, and Justin is another, uh, concrete guy, MPC Construction, you remind him.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, cause I definitely need somebody that knows somebody to get that done.
Yeah, you've called a few people, but.
Oh, I've called a bunch, you know.
The MPC will come right down, I just had to do four floors for myself.
Okay.
Good, Dawn.
Okay.
Yeah, I've tried to give him a lot of information and he's followed through with it, but.
Okay, well, the thing is, um, we'll get back to you on your budget though, I don't, we'll have to revisit that.
Dawn.
After you meet with Lean.
If I was younger, I'd do it, I've done plenty of them, but too old now.
All right, I'm going down, thank you, Dawn, thank you. Appreciate it. Mailbox items now.
We'll see you next week.
Yeah.
All right, first thing is, um, transfer station? Yeah, she put it, we got it out of my school. We have two, uh, we pursued three quotes, um, for the bathroom renovation and we only get two out of three came in and they were both competitive.
Bye now, take care, Dawn.
Is it in front of you, Dave?
No, that's just this part of it.
I have it.
You have it.
I know I have it, right here.
Got stuck in with the other.
So, there's two companies.
I read these proposals pretty clearly.
Okay.
And, um, this proposal I have is, both of them are cleaning the entire moldy area, cleaning back, re-sheen rocking, re-taping, re-mudding. Um, but I did notice that proposal's only a little bit slightly higher and he's providing all new three-quarter inch Advantech flooring in there where this guy is just cleaning it. So that's the difference in the money and I think for the slight bit that he's higher, that looks more complete to me.
What's the Advantech flooring, is that plywood?
Three-quarter inch subfloor, which is the part that's all dirty and grungy and.
Yeah, does that, does that include the flooring materials also?
It says all the flooring material in there too.
That's what it says, install new vapor.
Barrier and floor area.
Barrier and delayment, install new commercial grade LVT laminate flooring.
And Advantech plywood, so that's on chief.
I didn't see that.
You keep reading, it's in there.
Supply the labor materials. Install new vapor barrier and delayment. Install new commercial grade LVT laminate flooring. Trim out the bathroom with three and a half inch cornel casing. Apply drywall, apply three, apply wall, new paint, let's hit that one. New shank, new drywall. Install new, yeah, yeah, Advantech plywood flooring glued and fastened with room shank nails, so it's at the top.
So for the small difference, I would, I don't know either of these guys, but I would suggest going with the guy that's gonna put brand new plywood in there. Cause that plywood's pretty, pretty.
Beat up.
It's greased up too, it's, you know, greasy, muddy.
In here, in here it's a little.
I'm just worried the VCT might not stick down even if you clean it.
Right, that stuff won't stick, yeah.
Right, so it'll just keep popping as you walk on it, so. I don't know either of these two guys, but I'm thinking that one's more complete.
The difference, the difference in price is.
We'll get it, we'll see. Trade this off, he puts in the.
Yeah.
Cause you're only talking very handful of dollars really.
And then I ran a report as of today, Mike, of building, it's right there.
Mm-hmm.
And that's the, what, nine, eight?
Nine, ninety-three hundred. That's a, to me it's no bigger. Bobby, any further discussion?
No, I think that I, I prefer, I'd prefer that one too.
We have consensus.
There's a, a little bit more work to it and that's the difference in the prices.
And I just don't have the new flooring down there. So I, so I'll make a motion, right?
Yep, we make a motion, yeah.
To accept the bid from MP, I think it's, pronounced Ru?
Yeah.
For total material and labor for the bathroom remodel at the transfer station of twenty-four, twenty-three, fifty-four.
I'll second that. Any discussions?
Per his, per his bid dated December fourth.
Yeah.
Now, the thing is, um, what would stop someone from doing the construction right now? Would weather stop, nothing, it's all internal.
It's inside.
Okay.
But I would say that you know what.
I'll encumber it anyway.
Yeah, encumber it anyway, because.
Cause he may have.
I was gonna say, and the only thing that might stop him is he has the materials.
So this can go back to Lean.
Or he may have something else and he's gonna be doing it.
And Lean, I think if, if, uh, if you wanna just pick the CVC color, I don't think a neutral color is fine with us.
Anything but white.
You got any problem with that, Bob, just letting Lean pick?
I don't see the key color.
Something that doesn't show dirt.
Anything but white.
Dirt, complain about.
Something with a pattern, something with a pattern.
Okay.
Historical patterns. Now you got a bandstand.
That's, I guess, it's, uh, that one, signs.
Oh, that sign, I'm sorry.
All right, we just, wanna have a sign, I pulled them up twice.
Okay.
Uh, Lean, talk about the signs, these are the proofs.
Yeah, and based on my notes and what we have decided back a few months ago.
Yeah.
They are right in line with what, um.
I looked at the font size and the, the letter type and I think that looks good, the letter.
Yeah, and that would include installation. Uh, he did say the two-sided sign, they've already manufactured that in the past, so that is in production, but.
Have we encumbered that money?
We have encumbered that money.
Make it so.
Okay.
Okay, now the bandstand. All right. Question is, the garden club supposedly has had the town common, um, the bandstand or the gazebo, they've maintained it over the years.
No, correction.
I'm sorry?
Correction.
Go ahead.
It wasn't a garden club.
It was a.
Citizen of Dunbar.
It's a town common.
Town co, okay.
Is that what they're?
Town common committee.
Yeah, the garden club, it said started it and then it went to the town common committee.
Okay, they maintain over the years, we have a list of also, if you read it, there's a whole list of stuff they've done. They maintain the balance of about eighty-five hundred dollars to maintain it. They wanna pass it on to the town of Dunbar to maintain from here going forward. It's, uh, we're, we're basically would be accepting, it'd be like a building, we're accepting and we'd have to be responsible for the maintenance of it. Uh, we can take the money, the choice, Lean kind of briefed me on it, we can take the money, add it to the general fund and that just becomes part of our maintenance budget, or we could just keep the money, um, in a.
Right where it is, it's in a, it's in a separate checking account.
Right.
Held by the tre, uh, the treasurer and the reason for that is cause all this money that you have in that account was done through fundraising and there was a small, um, refund by, from the manufacturer of the roof material. So, oh, oh, in the year.
I'd like to, I'd like to make sure that that money stays in a separate fund because it was raised for that feature. I don't, I don't think it should get lost.
Yeah, it's an immediate concern, so I think you're right, having the money there to tap into that money to make what needs to be done right away, Dawn.
Right, right. So I think what could happen here is when we do our joint loss meeting, for example, when we do the library walk around, that could be part of the inspection, so that.
Can I, um, suggest one other thing? Just like we did a warrant article to make sure the funds couldn't ever get moved on the, um, mil foil. I would like to have a warrant article so that money goes into a fund.
It's already there, it's already in there.
Any future select board could move it, just as you're asking us to.
But things they could have.
See that, but if it goes through town warrant, no select board can move that money, it can only be used for that.
But then the problem with that is you have to create a, um, either a revolving fund or a, um, capital reserve fund of some sort and then to spend it, you have to follow the fund, you know, fall within the guidelines, so.
I, I, I like your idea of just keeping that money dedicated to his, in the checking account. I don't think, I think going, it went a step before, that eight thousand dollars is gonna be gone in about two years with the repairs have to be done. Then it'll be just under the maintenance budget. This is, I don't think this committee's gonna do any more fundraising, once it falls into our, uh, the town.
That, that's, that's the purpose of moving it on, that and the fact that you, you know, the selectmen have, uh.
Additional funds.
Well, not so much that, but I mean, they're, you know, the people who are taking care of it now don't have the resources to get contractors and whereas you have the resources, you can, uh, you know, collect bids for the roofing or whatever, but, you know, the two people that are doing it just don't have that capability.
I think, I think you can leave the money there only because you have that situation with the historical awareness committee has a fund, the energy committee has their own fund that they put money in.
Yeah.
And then you're at your home day, which gets some monies that they put, that we've allowed them to use from their tables. So I, I think if we leave that money that way, so it is tapped just for the repairs and, you know, the cleaning of. So I, I think if we leave that money that way, so it is tapped just for the repairs and you know, the cleaning of, of the bandstand.
Right, I wasn't, I wasn't worried about this select group, Bob, I was worried about other select groups putting it in the general fund.
But the thing is, eight thousand dollars in one season, it could be gone.
Yeah, it could be, but if it's not.
But we're talking about such a small amount.
Just like the state, they think, you know, they put everything in the general fund and then, you know?
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye, it's gone.
I, I like to just, uh, let's think about this, I'll table it for this week, we'll come back to it next week.
Okay. Nope, but that, well, we're still gonna talk about that. I was only talking to funds, we still have to talk about taking over the.
Yeah, right, right, absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay, taking it over, I mean, the, the thing's in disrepair right now as we speak, according to that report, there's work has to be done now.
Right.
It's very mo- small work though.
Well, it's small work, but I mean, it's.
Like they said, the roof has some off, but it's still holding on.
Yeah, it's still holding up.
The rails all been repainted, the benches have been relabeled.
The only thing, the only issue that's got is the roofing, cause it's a um, you know, same, the same, yeah.
That was on the top.
And you got three columns that are cracked, that could use, be replaced, so that's, that's it. Everything else is really up to snuff, you know?
Yeah, so it's not that much.
It might be something we can just put out to bid or get some quotes in the summertime and just get it done.
That is the point, yeah, that is the point, is you, you can put it out, something out to bid and get five, six bids even where they're looking in the yellow pages, well, no more yellow pages, but you know, trying to find contractors to give them prices and nobody calls back because it's, two ladies calling them.
Is there any way we can put that in a special fund that can't be changed over to the general fund?
Well, I'll tell you, if the board that comes along in the future decides that they wanna liquidate that, those funds just for the sake of it, I, I think it would be, they'd be hard pressed to get the whole board to vote to do that, oh, and.
Only takes two people.
Okay, but only, but giving them the history of where this came from, I think.
There's a deterrent, probably a deterrent from them.
One more thing is that um, you said that, Mike, is um, if you just get on the ball and fix some of the things, most of the money's gonna be gone anyway.
That's what I'm thinking.
So, it's either, you either don't do anything and leave all the money sit there, or fix it and use the money.
Yeah, I'm saying fix it, use the money, and then if we need more money, it's gonna come out of general maintenance budget as we do painting and anything else.
Yeah, at that point, you know.
Cause it's not, we're not talking about a huge amount of money, the thing is, there's no money going into it unless it's voted into it.
Right.
And the thing is, we don't have to vote money into it because it'll be coming out of our maintenance budget.
Cause it's the town's building.
Property, yeah.
I don't have any problem taking that over, it's on town property.
Yeah.
Lea, did we already ensure the structure now?
We insured it.
So I have no, I have no issue taking it over.
And the other thing too is if you, if they exhaust their money at some point in time and those dedicated people aren't involved, it's gonna go into disrepair anyhow and then we would end up, the town would invest in trying to take care of it.
Yeah.
So you might as well have your thumb on it rather than not have your thumb on it and take care of it.
It's a pretty bandstand too, you know?
It is, it gets used a lot.
Well, not as, not, not, shouldn't you use more, really?
Yeah.
We should have concerts here more often.
Oh, well, yeah.
But uh, but I was looking at Bose the other day and I was like, ours looks way nicer than that, you know?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So I think we should answer them back and say that, you know, the select board has had a consensus that the town would like to take it over.
I think they'd like us to, from that.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
If you wanna make a motion and then all again.
Let's make a motion now, I'll make a motion that the town of Dunbar, per the recommendation of that board, uh, take over the bandstand and the maintenance.
Yeah, we accept the bandstand.
I'll second your motion.
Okay.
And don't forget to thank.
Any further discussion? The money's, I think, is a mute issue, I really think it's.
Now the money, we wanna make sure in the letter also stated that it goes into a separate fund just for the bandstand maintenance.
It's already there.
Already there.
It's already there.
It's got its own name.
Don't part of our motion.
Okay.
Mike, don't forget to thank them.
Who's thanking who?
Don't forget to thank the people who've been doing all the work on it.
No, no, but I'm saying, who's thanking who? They, they should be thanking us for something.
Bandstand.
No, 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 no.
Maintenance.
No, no, I think it's, I think it's, I saw the price, I could not believe the price, they paid up to fifty thousand dollars at that, at one point for that?
And that the money, the remaining money to stay in that account.
No, but I mean, all the years of maintenance they did, that's my point, two people did all that maintenance.
Yeah, Don and Gail.
Yeah.
Put the money right in the motion, it's to stay there to.
Yeah. No, the thing is uh, i- i- I think it's right to move it on, it's in a, as it, you said, it's on town property, it's, it's used by the town, it's listed.
The town says, we look at our nice bandstand, well, pay for it too.
Yeah.
Take care of it.
Yeah. Yeah, all in favor?
Uh, and now I'd like to thank the two people, Donna Dunn and Gail Martell by name, for their interest in keeping that bandstand in fairly good shape.
I love Bill Zeller.
What's that?
Bill Zeller was on that letter too.
Was Bill Zeller on there?
Yes.
No.
Well, here, here.
Just the cleaning part or something?
He changed the light bulbs when they brought.
I wanna, I saw, I, I concur.
But they did the cleaning and everything, you know, it's, they kept it up.
They re- they had three columns repaired already, they had, we took the railings off, brought them into concrete, had them sandblasted and powder coated already, had those corbels made up and installed already, you know, so they did a lot of stuff.
Hey, did you notice some of the towns like in Bow, they put um structural braces so that it doesn't rack with the snow load?
Hmm.
Did you notice that on those?
Yeah, those have braces.
No, they, they put like wooden two-by-fours so that when the snow load gets on it, doesn't have a lateral wind load.
The builder put uh, what do you call it, um, um, gussets above.
Yeah.
To keep it from rocking, I remember doing that.
Was it, was it custom built, was it a custom built?
It was a custom kit that was.
It was a kit that, that was.
We beefed up.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it actually is, uh, the kit came in, it was the wrong stuff, if you remember.
Well, I like to, I like to further acknowledge Bob's acknowledgement of those people who've maintained it over the years and.
Yeah, they did a lot of work over the years, you know?
Thanking for uh, uh, letting the town uh continue to maintain it.
And you know what's involved in other things, so take something off their plate.
Yeah.
Okay.
I put it on my plate.
Well, I, it's gonna be all our plates.
No, you're right, you're gonna do all the writing for this.
Okay, uh, let's move on to mailbox here. I got the uh, part-time detective issue, Lean, wanna give a little bit of background on this one?
Okay, so. After reviewing, um, I have to follow up your um meetings with your departments and input the um budgets into the programs. You can have a, an overall total um budget review at a later date. And I have a few questions about the police department and what I found was that on his summary sheets, he had described um the detective, which is a part-time line, as a patrolman, so I got that clarified. It should've read that it was a detective, but what I was not aware of is last year when we developed, or in two thousand seventeen when we developed this position, um, my understanding was that we, because it's a part-time position, you'll look at the first page and it says part-time police officer is right at step three. And then we had um part-time secretary, which is at step three. And then we, my understanding was is to insert a new position and create the um rate of pay that you guys approved and insert it similar to the other part-time positions, uh, to, to be consistent. But what Dan explained to me when he presented it to the board, his understanding was to take the full-time wage scale of the police officer, which is on page three, and duplicate the same rates for step one, two, and three and insert it into the police detective. So, rather than have the one wage at sta- step three, the, the new wage scale would show a step one, a step two, and a step three. So, this individual was experienced and hired at step two, so his budget basically says that she's at step two currently and that she will qualify in two years from seventeen to nineteen to step up to step three. So in order to do that, I really need the board to either discuss it with the chief at length or adopt this amendment so that what I'm presenting to our auditors is clear and that there is three different rates of pay for a detective in the future and that the current detective will, is, is, which is at current step two rate will actually be in a step two and she will be moving up to a step three. And that's based on a two-year increment, so step one to step two is a three-year with a five percent increase and step two to step three is a two-year, so because we created this in two thousand seventeen, there'll be um thirteen weeks at step two and then the remainder of the year we move her into step three.
Isn't this the back, back way door, putting her steps in the step scale? Cause things, obviously, um, where was, where was the, it was always listed as a uh, part-time one rate for part-time and all of a sudden now, we basically built in a pay raise for her where there's been no pay raises for like, for the secretary or any part-time police officer.
Uh, that's just my understanding, whether I understood it that way or not, I just need to make sure it's clarified so that the board, when you're approving, um.
I'm not following your pages to tell you the truth.
So, the first page is what we currently have, after reading.
Why is it all the way over here, step three on the?
Because that's the way all of the part-time officers have been in the past. The part-time police officer never had a wage scale, it just had everybody being paid at that rate. Um, the secretary um never had a wage scale, it was always paid at the higher end.
So then go to your second page.
So the second page is inserting what the full-time police officer rate is, but on the detective part-time section. So that's what I need you to.
In other words, you're creating a step system.
Correct, I'm, so if you look at the detective.
I don't mind having a step system for it, I mean.
In the future, if someone else should fill out those shoes of a detective, they would start at step one unless they're pre-qualified or.
Then all the other jobs have a step system, why wouldn't the police department have it too, right?
Well, the thing is, Dave, it goes back to the thing, um, like go back to the first page again. This is the way, this is the way it's been getting, this is the end, this is like the eleventh hour of the, of the twenty-eighteen, we're coming to the end of the year and all of a sudden we have to say, oh, she's not step three, she's step two. So if I create a step three, I can get her a huge pay raise. This is at the last minute, crap it, I don't like it.
Again, it may have been my misunderstanding of how we wanted to propose a detective position. But we need to adopt the three-step tier for detective.
Or ask questions.
Or ask questions.
Or ask questions, cause your part-time police officers stay at that step of nineteen fifty-two.
Which will now, in two thousand nineteen, be nineteen ninety-one.
Right.
And if we're doing it for the detective, why aren't we doing it for the?
The secretary stays the same, it's part-time. And you have a part-time detective and you want a step increase that continues to advance.
I could never understand why there were some individual, some um.
It should all be filled in like Mike and I were just saying.
Exactly.
It should go up on the police up here too, the secretary and the officer.
Right, yeah.
Although they don't have a secretary now.
That's what I'm saying, is if you're using.
He's not asking for it now because he doesn't even have a secretary, but it's, all the holes should be filled in like you're saying.
It should be, yes, because what happens is you hire the individual at step one, in three years to give them the incentive.
It feels like every other department has steps, it makes sense to have them.
Yeah.
All the holes should be filled in.
Yeah.
Right, because you've got, you've got the police, part-time police officers and they're at the ones, they're at that one step.
So should we send that back to, you know, let the other two positions fill in as well?
And then make a motion to accept the changes to the wage scale?
Next week if we get one.
Thing is, the thing is, let's talk about part-time police officers, so we have all the part-timers, he's got a lot of part-timers, they're all making one rate.
Yeah.
So, what is nineteen fourteen, for example, on the first page, does that become step one, two, or three?
Looks like they made it the middle step, Mike. If I look at the previous page, they took this rate here, twenty-three eighty, they put it in.
Right, but, but the thing is, but the thing is.
I guess that would be a question you'd have.
And the thing is, we have, we have some good part-timers right now.
Yeah.
And the thing is, I, they're gonna, the, everyone gets a raise in there if we go with, if we go with his logic.
Yeah.
That, to me, this is gonna be, this is, this is work for next year, this is not, this is, this is the nth hour, I don't like it. And the thing is, uh, because, uh, was it chief, is it, uh, who's the part-time that works a lot, works for?
Joe Milli.
Joe Milli, oh, that's an example, he should be getting paid nine fourteen, I'll look at page one, nine fourteen.
Which is what he's currently being paid.
Then, okay, then, the thing is, what would we bring in?
Or is it nineteen fifty-two now?
Well, what would he, what would he bring up for, uh, step one would be?
Yeah, I have to, I.
Extract down?
Yes, it's a five percent change between step one, two, and three.
Okay, then, then why is, um, the, the, why is not, why do we not do that for the police detective in the same manner? Why is she a step two all of a sudden?
That's because you guys authorized the twenty-three eighty price.
Right.
Pay rate back in two thousand, well, less into them.
Did we say it was a step one, two, or three?
He said he wanted to introduce her into the position at the same rate of the full-time police officer, step two.
Right, it didn't say anything about creating a step system for the detective. Cause if, if he was gonna be fair to the detective, then what about being fair to his other part-timers? You can't pick and choose who you're gonna be fair to, either you're fair to all the part-timers and create a step system or you, or you keep them all the same. He is not being, he's being, he's being cherry picking again. He's cherry picking, and Dave, I don't, I disagree with you, I think is you can't cherry pick, you gotta be equitable across the board. I think is if, uh, then chief, then that part-timer, shall they step two right now, or they step one? Let's, let's, let's get a step system that works for all the part-timers, not just one.
Next year.
Yeah, you know, and, and he didn't really clarify, he said.
That did just get proposed to you guys last week when I was in here?
No.
It's in his budget and I was reviewing it, entering it into the system and I had questions, so I didn't.
See, we, we just listened to his budget last week, cause this is something we're gonna work on, but, you know, he didn't clarify when he said that he wanted to put the detective in, at the patrolman's step two rate.
That should've been.
That's, that's, I understand that he wanted that rate at step two. But he didn't say that that was gonna be ongoing for the detective. He said he wanted the rate to go in as a patrolman's step two rate.
Okay.
That's the way I understood it, you know? So it didn't say that it's gonna go to step three, you know, within the next couple of years and then. I, I don't think he clarified it that well, though.
No.
Should've said that there would be a step increase for a part-time detective, unlike the part-time police officers.
At least he's gotta come in and explain it through the.
And the thing is, and you gotta be fair to other part-timers there too. I mean, um, it's one thing to be, how can only one part-timer have a step increase and the others don't?
Right, so I.
We even have a step increase for the part-timers at the transfer station, so I think we should have, there are, you know, you shouldn't hire the guy a part-timer, brand-new, that makes the same as Joe that's been here for X amount of years, really.
But you know what, it's kinda late, I, I don't have to agree with the, which I don't usually agree with these, but I have to agree with you that it's kinda late to bring it in and have us try to decide step increases in someone else's budget that they're presenting to us. We haven't even started to work on our own budget. Now, the very least, he should've proposed this during the year so we could look at it and, and understand what the impact is.
Yeah, I think he probably didn't think about it, but I can't understand having no step increase for part-timers that's been there for twenty years over a guy you hired today.
Yeah, I agree with you, but like I said, this should've been something we could've worked on ahead of time so we knew where we wanted the numbers to be, rather than getting it thrown at us in budget season and then we have to make the decision, you know, and it looks like you're trying to increase everybody's budget and, and actually you're just trying to be fair.
Right.
Just for the record, I did not mean to just throw this at you, it was just a question of mine and I needed clarification and I agree with you, if you do three steps for a part-time in the police department, it should be three steps for.
And I'm not picking on you, I'm saying that his proposal with this
Yeah.
Has us trying to treat it fairly, but it's not given us much time to really address that concern. Had we done that earlier in the year, then we would've known what the impact of a police budget would've been going forward.
No, but, but a patrolman's, he's got a lot of years of experience and he's valuable, he's very valuable. Okay, why don't we just have police chief on the agenda for the table for now, have a police chief come in and let's talk about it and uh, we gotta be a little, do it a little smarter and be fair. It's not about, it's not about.
We gotta want a rotisserie.
Don't watch the audio for video, for YouTube, for the.
No, it's, it's about fairness, the thing is, because uh, because some of the other part-time officers, I think, deserve a sense.
The transfer station, we just gave uh, Dave Nickerson last week, he increased his step.
Yeah.
You know, it's kinda, the guys, and I understand the job is. You know, it's kinda, the guys, and I understand the job is not a job I.
But even a step system for the part-time police officers would be a little bit of, you know, okay, hey, next year I'm gonna make the step, you know, whatever, you know? Right now, there's no incentive. Okay. Okay, that's. Well, we're in consensus, I don't believe it, we're in consensus on that issue. All right, just take the emotion, oh, I did, I did.
You should get so hot.
Because, uh. It's my wallet, Bob, it's my wallet.
I don't know why you said you were feeling chilly today.
Okay, um, mailboxes items. NHMA sent us a, a nice repurposed book, it's about, it's about getting grants and stuff.
Well, it's actually a breakdown of where we stood over the last ten years and how the funding was distributed to the local government level and how it may have been at a higher percentage than it, it dropped substantially than they reintroduced a higher percent. It's actually very good reading if you wanna take it home and, um.
If you take it home, just bring it back so it can be distributed among the office, okay?
Only because what, what I think I'm reading and I read a few of the pages is that it's, it's possible in the future that some of the funding won't be there. So you're always hearing about highway grant money, how, you know, we had issues with the flood control being taken away from us for a short amount of time. But it really touches on all the different areas with between highway, um, rooms and meals, um.
Basically.
Flood control money, so it's.
It also delineates the, um, the prior, the legislative positions of the NHMA. These are things that I voted on when I went to the meeting in September. So we went on priority, so it's a, it's a business synopsis of what.
So I guess we better read this pretty close if we voted on something.
I don't know if there's a way for me to, I could probably copy each page and then scan it for you.
No, just leave it, leave it and then they can bring it back.
Yeah, I won't take this week, so I know we're on time, but I'll grab it later.
Now, the thing is, regarding our legal, another thing from Mitchell Group. If you recall, they also represent us, the Mitchell Group represents us in the, um, the public service tax abatements. And they're overworked and they're asking if we'd be concurring to, they wanna outsource it to another firm. Uh, not all the issues they're dealing with, but just the, uh, the, uh, public service abatement cases. I have no issue with that, um, I think it's.
Alls I know is when you outsource it to a different client or different, uh, they have to spend enough time to get themselves up to speed where we've already paid an attorney to be at this present spot. So I will say if they outsource it, whoever the new attorney is, when they get into the, the meat of it, was gonna have to get, spend time. So we're gonna, we're gonna incur additional costs.
They do, they do say that they've been involved in a smaller scale, like fewer towns.
Right.
But they're doing the same thing for other towns.
They would say they do have, they could walk in with experience right here. So I, again.
I'm just saying on my own, I've, uh, had it happen.
But remember, we're already, I think our legal bill for that was.
One thirty-seventh of the.
Of the entire bill.
Cost, and I think that.
So there are other attorneys involved, so.
Yes, yes, we're one of forty municipalities. Do we have, do we have a consensus here that we agree with the.
Mike, does the Board of Assessors know that?
We're gonna pass it on too.
Pass it on.
That's already been, the town administrator's already warned me that that's gonna happen.
I would think that you'd wanna know what they think.
Oh, yeah. But the thing is.
You might want a table that'd get their input.
Okay, I can do that, yep.
It would make sense to find out what direction they're going in, rather than going in the direction and then having to correct yourself.
We're in consensus, so you're gonna, that's we report that.
Pass that on, are we good with that? I can pass it on?
Yeah. Unless I have.
I see that.
Okay.
I said I'd like their opinion first, so I'm not in any consensus until I get their opinion.
Are you, are you, two-thirds of the board somewhat have somewhat consensus of that's a good direction for our representation. But I think they would wanna know what we think too.
You know what I think of Mitchell.
Uh, speaking of, uh, speaking of legal representation, that's still, uh, our legal representation will probably change in the springtime after the budget season. We're gonna, that'll be one of the projects we're gonna be looking at.
Smile when you're sitting on cameras, they'll probably be looking at this.
Hey, that's fine, that's fine. I have no problem with that. I have complete transparency, complete transparency, okay. All right, we have to sign another document here, a grant. This grant is for, uh, joint.
Turn around.
Look at all this, look at all this, more to you. How many times you have to sign this?
Um, it's a grant and it's usually every single page.
All right.
And we only did it in duplicate, not duplicate this time, so we're.
Okay. That's.
So as few recall, Chris Verlard mentioned this grant, um, for the board at an earlier meeting, stating that there was grant money out there to educate and train both the police and the fire department in with Narcan.
Oh, yes.
And so this is the funding that's there, it's, um, has to be submitted early January. So they're asking the board to sign, accept, and make a motion for our minutes so that they can submit that information with the application.
This is for you.
I have my delivery.
Okay.
I'll start.
Motion was.
You guys are looking at that. I'll make a motion, uh, that the Town of Dunbar Board of Selectmen accept the terms of First Responder and Comprehensive Addiction and Recovery Act, FR-CARA Cooperative Agreement as presented in the amount of thirteen thousand, seven hundred and sixteen dollars and zero cents to implement a mobile integrated healthcare M I H program pending both in Hampshire Fire Standards and Training and EMS Approval and Governor's Council Approval.
I'll second that. Any further discussion on this grant, gentlemen?
No, it's a grant, I think we should, uh, take our hats off, hustle our life on this and go sign it away.
All in favor?
I. Now we're in consensus.
Well, it's more than consensus, we fight some voter motion.
So the bottom has to be initial just on one.
Oh, okay, yep.
Each page.
I think I'm not going. Really? Initials are not much better than signatures.
What are you using next?
Just about. Just about.
Just gotta get some of these where you don't have to do this.
Bob's using an X, he's a forged mine.
Doing the O.
Hey, um, who's the notary?
Me.
Oh, okay, that's what I'm saying, I don't know if Linda needs to be in here. That's it? Have fun.
You have to do it all over again, Bob, you're not.
There is two copies of this?
Yes.
Yeah.
And photocopy? Probably been doing my initials.
Practice for those Christmas cards.
I'm serious, we should get a signature out.
It's called Joe Murray.
This one's done, Bob.
Okay.
I'll check and make sure.
Okay.
I can't believe I came back and you guys dragged this thing on. Bob, you signed on the wrong line. I'm signature two. No, I changed it around.
They don't, now they know it's not photocopied.
These are originals.
Yeah, I think if you could have, um, or done, you could have covered some of this money.
He's already encumbered a thousand dollars. The, um, donations, those expire at the end of the year, he bought two benches with that.
Lean, you just have to date this for us?
Yeah.
How am I to sign this, huh? No, that's just, that's just a part of it.
Okay, while Lean is doing that, I just wanna, the town court just bring this up for information for this week and next week, we can talk about it some more. But, um, she wants to increase the, uh, the registration for dog licenses by a dollar for next year. It's been like many, many years since it was ever raised.
We can't get it repaired now. Yeah, I was gonna say, you gotta tell the dogs, and I forgot, I wanted to ask her that question. Where are we with these other dogs, these renegade dogs?
Two more hours. But as, we can raise that, but just to be aware that we'll just, if you have opportunity to talk to her about dog.
Yeah, so the guy is gonna find out that now that it's two dollars to register his dog or whatever it was. I'm in consensus, just let it go.
Okay. That's next one.
Tell me a big explanation.
We'll give it next week, if you, I'll give everyone opportunity if they wanna talk to the town court about it.
Okay. You know, we have that one, we got people that drive unregistered vehicles.
Okay, oh, rabies, oh, rabies. Okay, I just thought, Mr. Dave Demers, uh, will probably be coming back to work soon. His doctor hasn't released him, but he's doing better.
Yeah, but he's gonna get an MRI, so there's no.
Yeah.
So then they'll make a decision, so.
Hopefully he's doing better.
Yep.
That goes back to Lean. That's part of Lean's package he's working on, that's the package.
Powdered the ones he's got now?
Yep.
To rid of the part on you.
Okay. Pablo Comet, Leo, you have anyone left?
No.
Okay, back to the board, Dave to you. And could you address the dog pound?
Oh, that's good. Yeah, dog pound will be done, uh, we're working from seven o'clock to eight o'clock on Saturday morning. And I have the hog reeds coming to do the work.
Okay.
So, um, I haven't communicated with Jeff yet, but if he can't, I looked at it and even the brush that's in there could all be stacked on the side of the road and Pete could do it during the work hours, regular work hours if they had to, you know, it's not, it's not an enormous amount. And what we're gonna do is when we go in and do it, we're not gonna touch that bush that is in question.
Okay.
The one on the wall. So that can be handled next summer, you know, if he wants to try and prune it, we go look at it or whatever. So we're not gonna touch that.
I mean, try to prune it.
Right, we're not gonna touch that one bush that he wants to prune. He can do that and then we can go and take a look at it. But all the stuff inside, we want it flat, so you walk right in. See, I was thinking of doing that during the week, but if you're going there with the kids. So the only time they have off, it's not dark now.
That's okay.
And I was hoping we could get it done before the end of the year, because there's still hog reeds.
Yeah.
So I called them up, after Lean gave me a heads up and I. And they might have to put some hogs in here, you have no idea.
Is that this Saturday?
Yeah.
Ooh, sweet.
So.
It might rain Saturday morning, my, uh, Dave.
Huh?
They're calling for rain Saturday morning.
Yeah, yeah, it looked like it's gonna pass by us now.
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, they were and now it's looking like it's gonna miss us altogether, so maybe a little bit of sprinkler, dusting and flurries, but.
The thing is, it's gonna be warmer too, it'll be a nice.
You just have to bring the hot chocolate, Dave.
Yeah, the only thing, um, I wanted to bring up is in reference to the lockabout over there on Kelsey Road.
Yes.
That's been done a whole bunch in the past, I think Lean's aware of that. And now that our attorney has said what we're gonna do and through the guidance of the road agent, I think it would be better not to go out there at all, because the attorney has really handled what the town is gonna be doing after speaking with our road agent. And by going out there, it can only make it greater. Okay, and right now, our town attorney has given black and white instructions to all attorneys and all parties of what the town's gonna do.
Okay, if I, even if I go out there, even if I go there with just the road agent, I wanna see exactly what he's doing. Because, uh, I can see where he's gonna dump the snow, just so I have in my picture, because I'm sitting here ignorant to what's, uh, what he's talking about. And I, believe me, my intention of going out there is not to change anything that the attorney's put out, not to change anything that the road agent's put out. I just wanna learn, I wanna see the lay of the land, I wanna see exactly what the road agent has planned.
I guess, I guess more than that too is just be careful what you say, because he'll obviously turn it around, you know?
Right, but remember, as, as a signal, even as a, we're not gonna, there'll be no, it's not a decision-making process, it's an information process for me. And the thing is, and I haven't been out there to really look at the turnaround at all. And I think it'd be, I can look at a diagram and I'm saying, hmm, scratch my head and say, you've been there, you know it much more than me. Bob and I have not been there to a point.
I have been there.
Okay, well, I haven't been there to really study the turnaround and I wanna see what Jeff had, see what he has in paper and have him explain.
And even your town attorney re-explained it to his attorney several different times over that big long list.
Absolutely.
And he said, you know, based on what the judge's decision, the judge didn't just make that as a late decision. He used the previous road agents and all that descriptions.
So the thing is, I'm not trying to second-guess anybody, but I'm just trying to get a feel for it. So when someone comes to talk to me, I can say, well, I don't see the issue here. And the thing is, right now, he's got me at a disadvantage and I'm, I'm sitting here ignorant. And if I don't know what the road agents are doing, I can see what's written on paper, but I, I gotta translate what's written on paper to what the road agent can show me on the ground. And that's, that's, that's how I wanna be informed on. And I just wanna let Mike know that even if he's not there, I don't care if he's there or not, I just wanna let, give him the notice and the courtesy of me going up there with the road agent, that we'll be on his property. I think that's only fair.
Now, you keep, you keep going back, say you're gonna be on his property, but really that's the town.
Well, we, right, the town, right, we have the access to it. It's, uh, but it is, uh, the barn, if I go near the barn, I don't wanna be accused of stepping on his property without courtesy. Okay, and that's all I'm gonna do with that. Bob, you're invited to come if you want to.
Yeah, it, it depends when it's gonna happen, but.
And Dave, I'm gonna ask you not to come for that reason, 'cause I don't wanna.
And he keeps going back to this, and I think our town attorney explained as well, the thirteen to fifteen-foot travel width, as our town attorney explained to him, when you go down there with the maintenance vehicles, it, you know, it's obviously a wider used area, we have snow and grading.
Well, absolutely.
Our town attorney explained it very well, but it does not seem to be getting through.
Well, the thing is, I, I, I know that, that I was not gonna get on that path tonight and.
Here we are.
Yes, but the thing is, I'm not, I, I know it's thirteen to, it's twelve to thirteen feet, not thirteen to fifteen, it's twelve, it's actually smaller. But it will include, encompass the shoulders, and that's required for the maintenance of any road.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else on that?
Nope.
Okay. Bob, anything else?
I have nothing, no.
Lean, to you.
I do have a few projects still in, in the works, like the, um, roof for the fire department and, um, a few other things that you've, but I've just been really straight out busy with supporting a lot of our trustees and whatnot.
On the fire department issue, um, I did talk with the chief in reference to maybe moving that antenna, remember that came up? And it seemed like a light bulb went off, they had never looked at the possibility of possibly moving that antenna, only because it's, it's braced down lower and it's braced up higher. And, um, he's not sure how permanently it's braced, so he's gonna try to take a quicker look at that.
You know, there's telephone poles near there, isn't there?
You know, I talked about, you know, maybe putting it on a gable.
Yeah.
Instead, so that there's not a snow issue. And I don't think anybody had really ever looked at that before, so he's gonna, we're gonna look at that too, because that's not the only spot the roof's leaking. It's leaking where the buildings join, that was just an additional spot, so it won't fix everything, but.
That's a great idea.
He was gonna look at that.
Keep the snow from building, and ice building from building up there though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
'Cause he's worried about the antenna being damaged with the snow.
Right.
If you move the antenna, it's, da, it's not an issue.
And it's been there so long, I don't think anybody's looked at, moved it, so.
Yeah, right, exactly, yeah.
Okay. Lean?
I have nothing else.
Okay. Time is, I'll take a motion, gentlemen.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, nine-ten.
Favor?
Okay. As Bob would say to me.